Americans, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and individual, liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. Well, first item on the agenda is a very special presentation from our friend, King County Councilmember Reagan Dunn, who's gonna tell us about all the money King County has in their budget this year.
(laughing) I will be brief.[45.23][45.23](laughing) These are tough times, although not as tough as we've seen before. We have a balanced budget that was sent over by the executive, but there's a $40 million shortfall, a pretty serious one for the biennium, so we're cutting work release and home monitoring, $2 million bucks from the prosecutor's office, which is a lot, and most importantly, the sheriff's air support marine units are scheduled to be cut in 2018, so that's serious stuff. On transit, Renton served by 18 bus routes, 11 are all day, 7 are for peak, 300,000 hours are gonna be added, and 11, up to 11 routes are gonna see increased service in the city of Renton. So that's good news, and that's part of our Metro Connects program, the long-range vision, you know, and we're doing that because by 2040, we're expecting a million more people to be living in King County, 850,000 new jobs. So the plan is to add 70% more service and attempt to double ridership in the system by 2040. So we're gonna see increases in service and frequency, we're gonna see security cameras on the bus, this is this year, we're gonna see more drivers are hiring up right now, and increase in our base capacity, you know, with respect to transit, we're working with Mayor Law and others on the moving the Transit Center, which I support strongly, and we've been pushing that hard in the ways that we are able to do so at the county council. So that's good, and we'll continue to support the city on that. Switching a little bit gears here, we've got, related to elections and voting, there's a brand-new Dropbox for ballots in the Renton Highlands, we just put it in, it's at the Renton Public Health Clinic, owned by King County, so it's right out front, and so it'll be there for the general election, so just make sure whoever's gonna use it, put that ballot in by 8:00 PM, and frequently, we see lines, especially for presidential races, so you wanna get there early, but I think it'll do a lot to increase access, especially up in that area, which I think is historically underperforming in terms of voting, so this will help a lot. Chair of the King County Flood Control District, we've put nearly $1 billion of infrastructure improvements into King County, protecting from flooding lives, homes, businesses, property, proud of that. Since we started this government seven years ago, we've had seven clean audits by the state auditor, so very proud of that. No large flood district across the country has a better overhead-to-capital ratio than the King County Flood District, fully 94% of the monies we levy go on the ground for projects, and some significant ones, and I'll highlight three that are significant in the city of Renton. Some of you will probably remember the dredging of the Cedar River along Boeing down there, which was a significant issue, I'll speak to that in a minute. Kennydale Stormwater Grant, which I'll speak about, and then more broadly, the Cedar River Corridor Plan. So the dredging project, as you know, you've been working on this for years, Mayor Law called me and said, "We need some assistance with this, we need a partnership," so King County, we jumped, the Flood District jumped on it, and we were able, overall, to provide $13 million in funding for the global project, of which $7.5 million is for construction. So I got a chance to tour that with your Public Works Director, Ron Straka, and...
Reagan, before, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to thank you personally for all of your help with that. It was a big deal for us, as you mentioned, it takes a long time to get through that, but the potential flooding to the airport, to Boeing operations, was very significant, and frankly, the amount of money for dredging is a lot higher than I ever could imagine, and had it not been for your efforts, I don't think we would've seen that, so anyway, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you much, Mayor Law, and thank you for your leadership on that issue, too, and I got a chance to go down there and see it, tour it here with the Public Works Director and Ron Straka and others, and it's really a nice project, it looks great, I mean, not only is it gonna protect for a good number of years, the Boeing facility and the businesses along there, and the homes along there, from a catastrophic flood, 100-year event, but it's also, the planting, the vegetation was done right, and it's gonna be good for fish as well as for flooding, and that's what we've been trying to do, is kinda, where we can, make a difference in both fronts. So that was one example of a really good partnership between the Flood District and the city, I look forward to more of those. Couple other, Kennydale Flood Reduction Grant, so there was an adequate storm drain between North 30th and North 31st Street, and we were able to grant $185,000 to increase the size of that pipe, and I think that work has been done, or it's very close...
I believe it has.
Be very close to being done. And then more generally, the Cedar River watershed corridor plan, so all of the major river systems in King County, the Snoqualmie River, the Tolt River, the Green River, the Cedar River, the White River, the Raging River, we are globally planning for those watersheds from top to bottom, on how to protect from future flooding, how to protect salmon, how to blend a long-range solution for these corridor plans, and we're talking 20-, 30-year time horizon on them. And so, the Cedar River Corridor Plan, it was, has been kicked off, we had to make some changes in terms of our methodology, which we have now done, and we're driving that process forward, but we're talking about tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure improvement throughout this, much of which will be in the city of Renton, so it's really, really important that City of Renton stay engaged on that, because it is such a significant investment. It could be up, over a 50-year time horizon, we could be talking about $100 million, so that's important, I think that's next Thursday, when that meeting will be... Switching gears to parks and to trails, couple of big things happening right now, the East Side Rail Corridor, right, is in its, very far along in its planning process, and then of course, the Lake to Sound Trail, both those intersect, they are gonna make Renton a real hub for non-automotive transportation. For example, REI in Bellevue, their New York headquarters are being put in, 25% of employees bike to work, and half of them live south of I-90, so your constituents, and it's not that far of a ride, especially on a nice trail up through Newcastle, and so we're really working hard on the Wilburton Flyover, which Washdott has made a commitment to pay for, and it's gonna be a nice facility, but also, all those little above-grade places we need to fix, like over Ripley Lane, right there by V-Mac, and over the May Creek, and all of these areas, we need to find funding for. So we put it in our legislative agenda as some of our top priorities, we wanna get that thing moving, so, and we're in permit application process right now, so it's being driven forward. And I've said publicly, and you probably know this, that my position is that we should not be putting light rail through the Kennydale neighborhood, rather, it should be along the alignment of the interstate, so that's been my official position. The Lakes to Sound Trail, the city was very helpful in helping support a grant application from the state for $500,000, we haven't got it yet, but I think we're gonna get it, and that's gonna add 1.2 miles of new trail through the Black River Forest, and that's gonna be pretty special, too, when we get that done. So of all the cities in King County, Renton will actually see more money for trails than, from the parks levy than any other city, which is a good thing, and that'll help really improve your non-automotive infrastructure. So that's all I wanted to run over tonight with you, always a pleasure to come here every year, as I do with all the cities I represent, and if the mayor will permit it, the council president, I'd be happy to take questions.
Yes, please, council, do you have any questions of Reagan? Now's your chance. No questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I just have a comment, though, I really appreciate the good representation you've given us, I was very, very excited about the metro improvements for Renton. I know I have some of my colleagues to thank, too, that helped serve on some of the boards that helped set those, but I gotta credit the process with giving us that opportunity to get in there and advocate for more routes in Renton, and then the county's willingness to bring those forward, and all the non-motorized trails, it's very exciting, and clearly, you're doing a good job representing us, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman, I do appreciate the kind words, and we'll continue to do that, and make sure that Renton gets its fair share of these regional monies, 'cause if they're not going here, they're gonna be going to, you know, Kirkland, or Normandy Park, or who knows, so we wanna make sure that... I worry sometimes that Renton gets forgot about in the more broader transit conversation, and we wanna make sure that that...
We do, too.
Yeah, I appreciate you're watching out for us. We always think we fall in the gap between the east side and the south end, and people do kinda forget about us for that reason, so we appreciate you remembering us.
I think that's exactly...
But as Randy said, we really appreciate your advocacy on our behalf, it's been great, and appreciate it very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here this evening.
Thanks for the chance.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to take also the opportunity to thank you for your commitment with the community, not just for, on behalf of what you're doing for us in transportation and other areas, but also because you have been around with our neighbors in picnics and community events, and I highly appreciate that, I mean, it means a lot to them to be able to talk to you and tell you, you know, one-on-one, and voice their concerns, and you have been a great advocate for the city, and I highly appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate those comments very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is a public hearing, Karen, are you gonna lead this?
I am. If I can... Click it a few times. Ah. Okay. It's working? Yeah. Diane, sorry. Uh, no, that wasn't it. Okay, here we go.
Here, let me, yeah, let me get it down, I'm driving.
I'm up here, yeah, sorry. Here we go. Thanks. I'm, good evening, Mayor Law and council members, I'm Karen Briggs-Vick, the Human Services Manager for the City of Renton, and I'm here to go over the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Funding Recommendations, and the amendment for our 2016 Community Development Block Grants. In 2017, we are estimating that we're getting $631,633 in CDVG funds, and they'll be used for a variety of activities, as well as the contractual set-asides that we have with King County, and I'll go over those with more detail. We're estimating the total amount based on what we're getting in 2016. Each year, we receive an annual allocation of CDVG funds by what's called our joint agreement with King County, and it's basically a flexible program that gives us resources that we, as a community, get to decide how to use on community development needs, and it's administered through the Department of HUD, and also through King County, and like I mentioned, our allocation's estimated to be about $631,000. We're, staff is making the recommendation that the funds be used this way. At the top of the screen are the activities that we contractually have to set aside for the county administration and the county set-asides as part of our joint agreement. We also get $63,000 for planning and admin, and then we're proposing to use $25,000 for small business development, $75,000 for healthy housing, and $234,000 for the ADA improvements at the Renton Senior Activity Center. In the healthy housing, we're proposing to use some of the funds to replace aging roofs, where the houses have deteriorated to the point where the structures are in jeopardy of failing. This is another example of a roof, these are clients of the Housing Repair Assistance Program. We're also proposing to reallocate $40,000 from the 2016 funds currently allocated to the facade improvement program, and that will be used for architectural and design work at the Renton Senior Center. So they'll do the planning in 2016 and do the actual construction in 2017. The senior center is not ADA in compliance, and the counter is too high, and the thought is that senior center should be one of those facilities that should be compliant with ADA. We also require, we're required to have a funding contingency plan if our estimates are more or less than what we get from HUD, and so what we're recommending is, if there's more money, additional capital funds would be used for the senior center, 'cause the budget is estimated to be about $350,000 for the total projects, and if there's a decrease in funds, the decrease will come from the senior center project as well. So the recommendation for tonight is to approve the 2016 Action Plan to allocate $40,000 of the '16 funds to the design work at the senior center, and then after the public hearing and public comment, that staff recommends that council take action tonight by approving the recommendations for the use of 2017 funds as presented. Are there any questions?
Council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin?
So the funding taken away from the facade improvement program, I'm assuming that was unutilized dollars, or...
Yeah, they're currently using 2014, '15, and some of '16 funds, and so they have adequate funding for the projects in hand right now.
Any other questions from council? Okay, this is the public hearing, was there anybody that wanted to testify on this topic? What's the wish of the council?
Move the closed public hearing.
Second?
Move by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that the public hearing be closed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do I hear any motion?
Okay. Sorry, I don't mind making this motion. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I move that we approve the 2016 Action Plan Amendment to allocate $40,000 of 2016 capital funds to architectural and engineering design work on the Renton Senior Activity Center to remove architectural barriers.
Second?
The move by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council approve the 2016 Action Plan, any discussions or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Did you need additional action tonight?
Yeah, I need you to also approve recommendations for the use of '17 funds.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, we'll just do that as a separate motion. I move that, follow, okay, that we approve the recommendations for the use of 2017 funds as presented.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council approve the recommendations for the use of the 2017 funds. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Karen, we got through it.
Thanks, thank you.
That went too smoothly, and that's why it threw us.
That's right.[1057.58][1057.58](laughing) Okay, moving on to administrative report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several street maintenance and traffic impacts and road closures, all information about these can be found on our website, rentonwar.gov/trafficimpacts. Essentially, there's several closures from Monday, the 10th of October, through Friday, October 14th, including on Talbot Road South, Duval Avenue, Ferndale Avenue Northeast, South 14th, 1300 Lake Boulevard North, and Southwest 7th Street. There are also other closures that go beyond October, including those in 116th Avenue, near the US Post Office, Harrington, and again, in Harrington, the Sunset Lane, so please check the website for details of these traffic closures.
Okay, Pretty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to audience comments, we have two people sign up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes, we have a timer with a light next to the city clerk, first is Vic Bishop.
Hi, thank you, my name is Victor Bishop, and Mayor Law and council members, I live in the city of Bellevue, and I'm here as presenting to you about sound transit, and I'm recommending NO on Sound Transit 3, and I'm here as a chair-elect of the East Side Transportation Association. The thing I wanna focus on tonight is the, just the absolute humongous size of $54 billion. I did write out my comments, and you have them at your desk, and the chart is up on the, up on the screen. Fifty, it's so hard to get your arms around what $54 billion is, and one of the ways of thinking about it is that the second Panama Canal, which taken the last six or eight years to build, is $5.5 billion, or one-tenth of what we're talking about spending on Sound Transit 3, so that's just kind of perspective. As you know, Sound Transit's district is divided up into five sub-areas, East King Subarea includes the city of Renton, and East King Subarea, out of the $54 billion, comes down to $9.8 billion is what the share in 25 years will be collected in East King County. Now, that's still a huge number, and it's hard to get your arms around, so I try to get it down to something that you can relate to locally. When you, the city of Renton has a real robust system of coming up with your transportation needs, and talking to Greg Zimmerman, your Public Works Director today, he said the next two years, you're gonna be around $18 million a year, that you're gonna be spending in capital improvements for the next two years, that's the yellow number, $18 million on the chart that I've got up here. When you think about Sound Transit, it's really a train project for downtown Seattle, it's to do trains for Seattle, and it does absolutely nothing to relieve traffic in any way in Renton or most of King County. Now, the Subarea of East King has got about 585,000 people within it, the city of Renton's got 101,000 people, so that's about 17%, and you multiply that out on the $9.8 billion of the East King, and it comes down on a per-annual basis of $68 million a year that the residents of the city of Renton will be contributing towards Sound Transit every year for 25 years. And so, that's the red bar on the chart that you see here, that's roughly four times the amount of what you have decided, and I sit as a transportation commissioner for the city of Bellevue, so I go through all the CIPs and the TIPs, and try to go through the project lists, and I know how hard you work at trying to come up with the money in order to do the things that you, priorities that you wanna do within the city of Renton. $18 million is what you can come up with, $68 million is what Sound Transit is asking you, your citizens, to send to them to do trains for Seattle. Congestion is very often mentioned as a discussion item in most cities, and I'm sure that's true in the city of Renton, congestion is, just always comes up on the radar for people, and people in Renton are stuck in traffic, and they really know that, they understand that, they're stuck in the traffic, and the point of Sound Transit 3, or trains, light rail, PSRC says, by 2040, if you spend this kind of money, and even more, you might get up to .4% of the daily trips in the region on rail. Sound Transit says, oh, that's way too low, it's at least double that, you get up to 1% of the daily trips in the region is on light rail, if you spend $54 billion in the first 25 years. Of course, we all know that the plan is to sell 30-year bonds, and they don't sell the 30-year bonds in the first year, they maybe do, but they'll also sell them in the 23rd year, or 24th year, which means it's not 25-year program, it's a 53-year program, because you can't stop collecting the taxes until the bonds are paid off. You run that out for 54 years, you're not talking about $54 billion, you're talking about $250 to $300 billion in this program to do .4% of the trips in the region. It's just an enormous amount of money for a tiny amount of carrying trips, and zero congestion relief. You know that the delay, PSRC is stuck in traffic, report that says it's gone up 15% in the last year. What's .4%? So I encourage you to think in terms of NO on SD3, and I encourage your citizens to do so the same, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Diane Dobson, Renton citizen. What I originally came to speak to you about, I spoke with Mr. Vincent previously, and so I've changed my course of address, it said city center, so city center, recently, we became aware that there was a tent camped in the piazza for a couple days down there. Citizens are concerned, obviously, with camping in public spaces and railways and parks, so I just bring it to the attention of the council, that smack in the center of our downtown core was a tent that everybody got to look at for a while. Which brings me to the segue that the police department is understaffed, as per the numbers that we had, we would hope for, for a city of our size, and we became aware at a council meeting recently with Mr. Person's information, that there's a certain portion of tickets, and I apologize, I'm not fully educated on it, a certain portion of tickets or fines, maybe $10 in nature, that was originally earmarked for law enforcement training and police academy assistance with funds, so I make the request to the council and the city that whatever we can do as a neighborhood organization to support the city in the process to get those funds transitioned back to be earmarked, that can hopefully help our municipality and others as well, we would certainly appreciate that. And the whole understaffed issue goes to the animal control issue as well. Our neighborhood, it seems like a general consensus is that we're definitely in agreement that the city facilities need to be updated, they're sorely in need of not just preventative maintenance, but remodeling and updating, both for the animals' sake, as well as the animal control officers. The neighborhood generally feels that the consensus is, the animal control officers as well are fantastic officers. I've had the misfortune to have them take custody of my animals a few times, when my animals have decided they'd walk without me, but I fully trust those officers with my animals and the disposition and care of the same, so we hope we can support the process of the build. We are worried about the administrative portion of things, of course, as staffing a kennel or shelter can be quite complex, and we hope that there's some clairvoyance and transparency with that process, but whatever we can do to help you with the same. Neighbors are concerned with the current condition at the kennels, as the weather gets colder, and the animals are maybe in less-than-desirable conditions, and what we can do to help with that process as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have four items for council consideration, are there any items that councilmember like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second?
The move by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Person?
Yes, to committee reports for finance.
Okay, the first finance committee report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on October 10th, 2016, a number of claims vouchers, and one wire transfer, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $8,360,369.91, and payroll vouchers, including 659 direct deposits and 82 payroll vouchers totaling $1,401,203.85, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I just wanna note that in this voucher run, we sent the state treasury $53,640.99 in traffic penalties, and a large portion of that would be for education, training, for the state...
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Person.
Yes, to committee reports for finance.
Okay, the first finance committee report is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on October 10th, 2016, a number of claims vouchers, and one wire transfer, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $8,360,36.91, and payroll vouchers, including 659 direct deposits and 82 payroll vouchers totaling $1,401,203.85. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I just want to note that in this voucher run, we sent the state treasury $53,640.99 in traffic penalties, and a large portion of that would be for education, training, for the state training academy if they hadn't stolen it. And then, just a couple other little things to show that we spent $24,976.55 working on improving Henry Moses Pool so it'll be ready for the summer. And last, we spent $27,805 for fuel for the city fleet in one month. So I just want the public to know that not everything is... These are big numbers to me, but they're not in the hundreds and thousands, but these are the kinds of things that it takes to keep the city running on a day-to-day basis. With that, I move that council concur in the recommendation of finance.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the second finance committee report is regarding an inter-agency agreement with the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services. The finance committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to execute the inter-agency agreement between the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services and the city of Renton for the purpose of working with a DES energy savings company to reduce energy and operations costs, and to approve the associated resolution, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That's it for you, all?
That's it.
Ms. Witchy?
I can think of more, but I won't. I want to go home.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on to legislation, we have one resolution and one ordinance.
Okay, a resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an inter-local agreement with State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services Engineering and Architectural Services regarding the provision of energy, utility, conservation, project management, and monitoring services.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Remove the resolution to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the ordinance for first reading is regarding the unit lot subdivisions. This was a committee report that was approved a few weeks ago. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending sections of Chapter 2, Chapter 6, Chapter 7, and Chapter 11 of Title 4 of the Renton Municipal Code by adding regulations for unit lot subdivisions and definitions for lot, unit, parent site, and subdivision, unit lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McIrvin, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks. Megan, moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement about Committee of the Whole, and first of all, I would just like to explain to the council. So the topic of Mill Avenue, request for proposal update. You recall my saying last week that was reminder that we've entertained possible ideas for what could be done with the old city hall property. And I... Last week, I talked about us having a potentially a little subcommittee that would look at the proposals and figure out how we're going to have our council discussion. I just wanted to sort of ask the council permission to change that a little bit. We got to looking at the timing, and for a couple of reasons, I'm eager to bring this to the full council. One of them is that the... There's been a lot of investment in the RFPs. The people behind them are eager to get them in front of us as soon as possible. The other one's a little more selfish. I'm going to be gone on the 24th and won't be able to attend the council meeting. The mayor said it's possible to bring them to all of us on the 17th, and so he said the best way to do that would be to sort of dispense with that subcommittee and just... He and staff would just prepare a presentation. So unless anybody has any objections, that would be the plan, is that we'll see those at next week's Committee of the Whole meeting. And is that topic already in Committee of the Whole, or do we need to refer it?
It is in Committee of the Whole.
It was supposed to be... It was on the schedule tonight.
Did I... I didn't announce it.
Yeah, I'm not...
I think there was a misunderstanding, because I didn't announce it last week to be on the...
No, that's right, it was. It was part of tonight's...
I think it was because it was on the administrative staff agenda, but yeah, you did. I don't think you announced it.
Okay. So as long as it's in Committee of the Whole, I'm simply going to announce it for the 17th, which is what we had agreed on, if I understand correctly. So, okay. So with that, I'd like to announce a Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, October 17th, 4:00 PM, here in council chambers. There are three items on that agenda. The first item is the Mill Avenue RFP update. Second item is 2017-2018 budget overview slash department presentations. We expect to go over administrative services, community services, city attorney, emergency management, human resources, risk management, court, and public works. And finally, the third item on the agenda, assuming we have time, is regional issues. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corman. Next is Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am announcing a Planning Development Committee meeting for this Thursday, October 13th, at 3:00 PM in the council conference room. We have four items on the agenda: healthy housing, docket 12 briefing, non-motorized mitigation fee briefing, and emerging issues. And that is all, Mr. Prince.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
No new business.
Okay, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, October 13th, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room, the Community Services Committee will be meeting, and we have two topics on the agenda. The first one is the South Renton Art Project, and the second item is emerging issues, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to announce that the Utilities Committee, originally scheduled for Monday, the 17th, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 17th, at 3:00 PM, the Transportation Committee will meet in the council conference room, and there is two items in the agenda. One is our airport lease with Canon incorporation, and the second one is emerging issues in transportation. But I want to take this opportunity to ask the president about the time. I'm a little concerned. Today, we started the meeting at 5:00, and we just saw three departments.
Yes.
And we were, like, super tight. So if next week on Committee of the Whole, we're going to see all these departments for budget plus the 200 and mill, and I think all those topics are super important. I don't know if would be enough time for 4 to 6... I don't know, from 4 to 7, maybe yes, maybe no. I don't know how big is going to be the presentation of 200 and mill.
Great question, and I'd have the same question. The people organizing the presentations for next week thought that they were going to be briefer presentations. They kind of have predicted timeframes for each that show them fitting within the three hours, but I think what... If it's okay, I think what my proposal might be is that we just prepare them, particularly the folks doing the court and public works, that they might have to just carry those to the next...
And we do that automatically. If there's a lot of discussion over any one of these departments, that could very well push it out to another week, so we're totally prepared to move as many of those out to the following.
Okay. And I think that's important, because I don't want you to feel pressured with the questions. I think if we get into, you know, administrative services, the first item, and the council wants to spend three hours on it, I think we should...
Exactly. No, exactly. That's... Yeah, we're prepared for that.
Okay. So...
Does that answer your...
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What's the wish of the council?
Move if you adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.